Okay.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Councilmember Farrelotto. Councilmember Nowakowski.
President.
Councilmember Rivera. Council President Pridgen. Councilmember Bowman.
President.
Councilmember Wingo.
President.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Motion to take item sixty-one out of order.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number sixty-one, School Zone Safety Program data.
So this item is open, I believe this was, there's a request to Commissioner Helfer, who I see is here. Commissioner Helfer is the administrator of the school zone. And so we're here to request data from him, Commissioner Helfer, if you want to do an intro, and then I guess we'll open it up to questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate being here today. We've been working on the data, and I had sent that to all of you. I hope that Mr. Eartha distributed it to you all.
Yes, councilmembers, you all have a new spreadsheet in your email inboxes.
But thank you, Mr. Farrelotto. As your body knows, your honorable body knows, the city of Buffalo has relaunched the School Zone Safety Program in the schools that have opened this fall. The original warning period before schools closed due to the pandemic commenced in January and ran through the end of February. During that period, over forty-three thousand notices were sent to motorists who were exceeding school speed limits by eleven miles per hour or more. The warning period was in effect for nine school zones where the infrastructure had been installed. During that time, our data demonstrated that driver compliance consistently improved, with thirty-four percent compliance in the first week, tripling almost to eighty-two percent compliance by the last week of February. Education does work. As schools continue to reopen across the city of Buffalo, the School Safety Zone Program should not be amended as it's currently designed to reach one hundred percent compliance with school zone speed limits, ensuring the safety of children, parents, administrators, faculty, staff, motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians. Consider that roughly five thousand citations were issued on October thirteenth in the five school zones to the owners of vehicles that were exceeding the speed limit by eleven miles an hour or more. In order to reduce the instances of speeding, the fines are the enforcement mechanism to deter these infractions. Enforcement, rather than being warned or let go, yields the strongest impact when looking at driver education. Otherwise, nothing would compel them to change their behaviors, and these behaviors are dangerous. Drivers need to take personal responsibility with issues of traffic infraction. If a child was struck, a driver could face a crippling lawsuit, far worse than a non-movie violation, with a fifty-dollar fine, not to mention the traumatic impact of seriously injuring or killing another person to save an average of ten seconds by speeding through a school zone. If Buffaloanians can give themselves more time to travel on snowy days, we certainly could give ourselves an extra ten or fifteen seconds to travel safely through a school zone. These citations are mailed to vehicle owners who are violating the rules of the road, both in the city of Buffalo and anywhere else in the United States or Canada. Approximately forty-eight percent of the violations were committed by non-city-of-Buffalo residents. Fifty-two percent were by Buffalo residents identified by zip code. However, due to the overlap in certain zip codes at our borders, the ratio probably is very close to fifty-fifty. The message to all must be that violations will only decrease when motorists recognize and actively change dangerous driving behaviors. We are all members of the community. We all share the same roads. A traditional police ticket for speeding in a school zone could cost up to twelve-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and yield eleven points on one's license, which would result in a mandatory license revocation. Most people are not aware of these extreme ramifications. Motorists ticketed in connection with the School Zone Safety Program are fined fifty dollars and receive no points on their license. Two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, there have been between nine hundred and eleven hundred traffic accidents per month in the city of Buffalo. On average, ten vehicles a day are taken to the city impound as a result of motor vehicle accidents. Every single day, a pedestrian or bicyclist is involved in a motor vehicle accident in the city of Buffalo. I ask that you consider these facts in the substantial amount of public demand for traffic calming measures and enhanced enforcement to ensure greater public safety. Students should be protected all day in and around our schools, especially with the new protocols that are in place to prevent the transmission of COVID-19. For many schools, this includes daily temperature screening of all students and staff outside or in their cars, new traffic patterns and policies that direct visitors, guests, contractors, vendors, and unfamiliar routes as they travel in and around schools, which significantly impacts routine traffic in and around these buildings and throughout the school day. Perhaps most importantly, many schools have developed staggered arrival and/or dismissal times to allow for increased social distancing on buses, in classrooms, and along ingress and egress routes. The enhanced level of outdoor activity and more frequent use of multiple buildings, outdoor areas, parking lots, playgrounds throughout the day is another reason to ensure the safety for all, all day long, in these challenging times. Before you, I've given you seven days of data from October thirteenth through October twenty-first, and I'll answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions about the data and then open it up to my colleagues. In the first, looking at the first seven days, and I looked at it quickly, I saw what appears to be approximately five thousand tickets issued per day. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So five thousand per day, and about fifty percent of those are city of Buffalo residents?
That's correct. And as you can see, that we average, that's five school zones, nine cameras, and we're averaging approximately, as you look at the data, roughly low thirty-thousand, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three thousand passes a day. And you can see the compliance rate, which is very good at this time, but it's only going to get better. And we noticed that last January, February, and March when we were doing the School Zone warnings, and we issued, as you know, well over fifty thousand warnings. The compliance rate is eighty-three percent for the first week, and then you can see it start to grow to eighty-four percent to eighty-five percent. I absolutely anticipate, and we saw that before and we're seeing it now, that as people get used to this, as they don't see the beacons, slow down, they might very well, you know, get one of these violations. They will start changing their behaviors, and we're going to see that compliance rate, I can assure you, shortly get into the ninety percent rate.
Okay, so right, right now, there are five school zones where cameras are up, and at some point, the administration, or the administration would like to expand this to twenty? Is that the plan right now?
Legislation allows us to go up to twenty zones. As you know, very few schools are open right now. Until those schools open up, we certainly aren't considering going to any zones. When they do open up, based on the traffic data that Commissioner Finn has presented of traffic counts and accident data, we have identified twenty zones that potentially could be live for, and right now, I think you can see the School Zone Safety Program map. I'm sorry. The host would have to put that out, but anyways, yes, we can go up to twenty.
Okay, so right now, it, we're, if there's an average of five thousand per day, if it went to twenty, it would like, it could possibly be twenty thousand a day if it's the same, if it's the same projections and averages that are currently there.
Yes, you're looking though, the data, as you know, we started on a Tuesday, so we had the data for the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. And when I say we have the data, these are after we have reviewed them. As you know, the law says that our vendor has to review them first, then they come to us, we have to review all these, and then they are either rejected if they're wrong, or they are validated and we send it out. So we have gotten through the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, as well as the twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty-first. It was, I cannot predict the future, but I can see what the trends are, and I can assure you that what was five thousand will start coming down. And, you know, so the best I could tell you is, I don't think we could just extrapolate and say, if we go from five locations to twenty, it's going to be four times more. Education is happening every day, and I think with more and more education, with people getting used to this, people getting the violation in the mail, I don't think those numbers will continue to be that high.
Okay, and then just a couple more questions. So each one of those tickets is fifty dollars, so approximately, in this first seven days, it's one point seven five million dollars?
I would say that's, off the top of my head, that's a good approximation of the revenue at fifty dollars per violation. As you know, the vendor gets a percentage, and the city keeps, I believe it's thirty-six dollars per ticket. The vendor gets fourteen dollars per ticket.
Okay, and then I just had one more question, then I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Do you have the, I see that there's an average, or there's a breakdown by speed, where, just a quick look, it looked at like ninety percent of the vehicles were going between twenty-six and thirty-six. There were some vehicles going fifty-five up to fifty-five miles an hour, which I believe. Do you have a breakdown in what time of day that these tickets were being issued, or would you be able to get that and send that to us at some point?
Yeah, if you could be specific, because, you know, as you know, you can take data and manipulate it and review it and go through it in a whole host of different ways. So if you want me to be, to analyze the data in a certain way, just tell me exactly what you want, the timeframe you want, the speed you want, and we certainly can do that. You know, as I put, as you see it here, anybody going twenty-six to thirty-five miles an hour is either going anywhere from eleven to twenty miles an hour over the school zone speed limit. And then I broke up a separate column where people are going thirty-six plus miles an hour. As you know, in the city of Buffalo, thirty is the speed limit, even if you don't have school zones. We got a lot, a lot of people speeding regardless of the school zones, and I think that's, that's a big part of this message. I'm out there in the streets every day. I'm sure you are too. I drive the entire city of Buffalo, and I see some very reckless, dangerous behaviors. And if we really want to protect our children, and I think we all do, this program will have that effect.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open this up to my colleagues. I appreciate the information that you shared. Any of my colleagues have questions on this? Council President Pridgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kevin, for the update. Have a question, and this is something that I believe I asked on the last time, and that is about where the hardware is, or the software is stored, and I think I was told the city would be running, running that portion, correct?
That is correct. I look at the software daily. Without that software, we could not validate these tickets. So yes, my staff has it all on their computers.
So an item I filed, well, just filed today came from an attorney who lives over by one of the schools who is very concerned, and it'll be filed, so I'll discuss that when it's filed. But I ask this question to get to this point, because some feel that if the cameras could be controlled, because it's computer-based by the school, and the school could flip it on, when, when children are, when students are coming, they could flip it on when they're leaving, or they could flip it on during a field day outside, or when they have significant amount of children outside. Is it only controlled, can it only be controlled at one location?
Yes, the legislation is very clear that the city has to run the program. We could, we could not let a school decide when and how they want to put the camera on. And as I, I think I made very clear from the beginning as well, we also control the flashy beacons, and we have the software that we program for those as well.
So it is possible to program them for specific times, obviously?
Yes, sir.
And right now, they're just going to be, well, if the, if the veto is, is not overturned, they'll just be on all day until six, right?
No, 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 no. The camera, the cameras are on, every school, when you go by, it has the school hours. For instance, St. Joseph's University Parish on Main Street, the school hours, the sign that says seven-thirty to three-thirty, that's the period of time. Now, if the cameras were on before that or after that, we would invalidate those tickets on our software. We would, we would reject them. But the beacons and the cameras are on together in unison, the same timeframe.
Okay.
And it's all based on the particular school. As we know, not every school starts at the same time. We have some schools that start at seven-thirty, we have some schools that start at nine o'clock, we have some schools that end at two-thirty, we have some schools that end at four.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Commissioner, you and I had a conversation regarding the beacons. In my travels through the South Towns, I came across beacons that didn't have the, the time. It just says, when beacon is on, twenty miles an hour, that was going towards Ole Enne. It didn't have a specific time when the beacons were on, so they programmed the beacons when they need to be on, and when they're off, it's the regular speed limit. Now, you said that you're able to program the, the beacons and the cameras. My, my thought is, why don't we just look at putting the beacons on without putting the hours, simply the beacons are on, you must observe the speed limit, simply because you have different hours, different buildings, and you mentioned yourself, and not only that, if there's activities in the evening, you can program the beacons to be on during the evenings, and people would have to adhere, because not everything happens from eight to four. There's, there's activities for kids after school, whether it's sports, whether it's conferences, so you can turn the cameras on, you can program the cameras instead of using Monday through Friday, eight to four, when the beacons are on, you must observe the speed limit, and you do away with all these signs that you need to make and put the changes that you need to make. And not only that, if it's public safety, if I'm having an event at seven o'clock in the evening, I want to be just as safe as I was that morning. So why don't we just look at, just using the beacons without the time and work with the Board of Education, so they can let you know when the programs, when, how it needs to be programmed into the systems? Is, do you see some merit in that?
Certainly, and we could absolutely have that discussion, and I think that the signage would have to be changed, and I think you do see it in other municipalities that says, you know, school zone in effect when, when beacons are flashing. We cert, we certainly could do something like that. That's more of a question for Commissioner Finn, obviously, and the traffic engineer and in his shop in terms of the signage and changing some of the signage that we currently have up to, to make that differentiation. But yes, that, that is something under the state law that we could do.
Okay. And I can add to that, if, if I could. This is Mike Finn.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So thank you, Councilmember Rivera. You are correct that the when flashing is an option for, for School Zone Safety signage. In, in my tour of first-string suburbs that I did, I noticed that used at some locations. I think the one thing that we'd have to think through, however, is the use of that globally, because, you know, we're not only talking about School Zone Safety cameras, oh, I'm sorry, we're not only talking about School Zone speed limits at locations where the cameras are active, there are School Zone speed limits posted at all of the, close to one hundred schools within the city. They're posted based on, on the time that the school reported to us. We'd have to come up with a way to have beacons at all of those locations and all the directions. That was part of the rationale behind public works going initially with the hard signs at all of the locations, was just simply that was something that was more feasible at, at the moment.
I'd like to continue this conversation with, if it's, it's all right with the rest of the council members to discuss possibly using the beacons and do away with the signage that we currently have, and allow the beacons to go on, not only in the morning when people are going to school, in the afternoon when they're being released, but in the evenings when they're having evening events. And as you mentioned, there are multiple buildings they have to walk to, so maybe during those times, the beacons can be on, and you won't need the sign, just the fact that you have a beacon that says you have to obey the speed limit, whatever the speed limit is, that would suffice. So I would like to continue the conversation with regards to changing the, the signage.
Mr. Majority Leader, yes, we could absolutely continue that conversation. And I think we, we all, myself included, we're going to have to include the legislation and, and the law. I am, I'm very certain that we, we probably could do what you're saying, but we still have to have the signage by law, and that doesn't mean that we couldn't have other signage as well, but there's certain signage that is absolutely mandated by law.
Okay. Can you let us know what that signage is?
Certainly. I will file something with your honorable body with, with the legislation that was passed, and I will basically cut and paste those sections, okay?
Okay.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Commissioner, can we, or either one, Commissioner Finn or Commissioner, can you give us the information to times, the school arrival and departure times? I know right now, we have the cameras at, what, five schools, but the total licenses that we have available to us are twenty, correct?
That is correct.
So even after this, once school goes back in session, how far, I mean, how many licenses or how many schools will we have cameras up at?
If, if, if Mr. Eartha will allow me to share some of my, I could share right now the, the map of the School Safety Zone locations, if that would be helpful.
You have those permissions now, Commissioner?
All right, I'll bring up the map right now, and let me know when everybody can, I'm sharing it, let me know when everybody can see it.
You're good to go, sir.
So right there is what we are, once school gets back in session, whenever that is, these are going to be the locations of the twenty zones, where we will have beacons, signage, and cameras.
Okay. So the beacons are attached to the timing for the camera itself, correct?
That's the way we do it. When the camera, you know, like I used the example before, St. Joe's, so it's seven-thirty in the morning, that School Zone signage is very clear, the School Zone hours are seven-thirty to three-thirty, the camera and the beacons are programmed to go on at the exact same time.
You know, I brought this up because we're really concerned. I mean, in a week's period of time, we got one point seven five million that we're going to be fining people in the middle of a pandemic. I got a little problem with that. And like I said, when we put forth the legislation, we all are in support of children's safety, but to the extent that we have that all the entire day, when children are safe in school is something that I'm not in favor of. And I think that we've gotten a number of letters from parents and constituents who are concerned about that, that when children are safe in school, we're ticketing people. I am definitely concerned about the speeding and red light running and stop sign, stop sign running in our school, through our city, and I'm willing to do something as it regards to that. However, to the extent that we're utilizing School Zone cameras in a block radius or a block and a half radius, I don't know if the is the, is the antidote to fix that. And I do think that when people start getting these tickets, they're going to be outraged, and I think we've already gotten some of that. I know myself and Joel have gotten people who are absolutely upset because they've gotten tickets. Some people have gotten two tickets. But, you know, if you could send me that information regarding the school times and that, I would definitely appreciate it, the arrival times and departure times, which we'll be using for those school zones, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I will, I will certainly do that, and I respect, you know, your opinion, obviously. Every school is different, though, and I don't want to lose sight of that. Using St. Joe's as the example again, you know, I'm pretty familiar with that school. I live very close by. My children went there, my wife taught there. So I know what happens at that school. And one of the things that happens when this pandemic is done, is they cross that street daily, and I'm talking every hour, because they take Jim across the street at Gloria J. Parks Community Center. So I, I just want to emphasize that one size does not fit all, that in certain instances, these schools are very active during the entire day.
Councilmember Wyatt, do you have any other questions?
Nope, I'm fine, thank you.
I didn't want to cut you off. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to thank Commissioner Helfer for the information that he shared with us. Clearly, there is a problem in the city of Buffalo speeding. Clearly, people are disregarding the speed limits as they're already posted. Clearly, half of the folks who are being ticketed are from Buffalo and half are not from Buffalo, and we can see that compliance is on the rise. Now, I have been clear about where I stand as it relates to the camera, the safety program for the school zones. I would like, because I don't, I don't know any other council member other than myself who's worked, other than, I think, Council President Pridgen as a, as a teacher many years ago, who's worked in the Buffalo school system, who can attest that the students actually are not in the building all day. The students are literally using the entire community around them as their campus, as their learning center. And with the lack of regard for the speed limit, the way it's set right now, even with cars driving as fast as sixty-one miles an hour down a residential street. Commissioner Helfer also pulled up the, 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 the cameras. If you look at that map, six of those cameras are facing Maston, or in Maston, in Maston or are facing Maston. And surprisingly, maybe I'm going to get calls now that I'm saying something, but my office has not received complaints about the cameras. We understand, or at least I do, that students deserve to be safe while they're in the school, while they're traveling to school, while they're traveling from school, sure, but the drivers need to have a higher regard for the speed limit, that the speed limits that are posted. Now, I don't, whether we're in a pandemic or not, all it takes is for a driver to come up off of their, their pedal. That's all it takes. Slow down. That's all it takes. Take your foot off the pedal. Again, if there was snow on the ground, we would leave the house many minutes sooner, so that we could make, like Commissioner Helfer said, to give us the time that we need to drive slower, so that we don't spin out of control. This is about the life and the safety of the children in our school systems, and those parents who commute to and from their schools, who walk their children to and from their schools. I, I, maybe I'll be by myself, maybe I'll stand alone, but as a father of five children who have all gone through the Buffalo Public School System, two of which who are still in Buffalo Public Schools, I would like the School Zone cameras to stay on all day. And it is not a money grab, because it is a change in behavior. There is something that we can all actively do to ensure that we are not being ticketed, which is come up off your gas pedal. It's really that simple. If you can't come up off your gas pedal just to slow it down, to save someone's life, or potentially ensure that someone is more safe, then maybe you should rethink taking, driving or taking public transportation. Because I, from what I understand, sitting as the chair for the Committee on Education as a prior, as I used to work in the school systems from two thousand and eleven to two thousand, no, two thousand and one. as I used to work in the school systems from 2011 to 2001, on and off, all the way to 2015, trust me, the students use the school and the community around these schools all day. They're outside crossing streets all day. The city is their campus, the city is their learning environment, the city is their classroom. And we ought to do just that. So as far as I'm concerned, I really believe and I'm hoping that everyone hears my heart on this, that in order to keep our children and families safe, regardless of the, if these were in schools zones or not, but because they're in school zones, we would leave the cameras on all day. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say I've never gotten a school zone ticket. I mean, I've gotten a citation here at my house. I'm not going to say I was the one driving either. But it takes some type, it's a retraining when you're driving them down these streets. I'm not going 50 miles an hour, I'm not going 40 miles an hour, I may be going 30 miles an hour and I'll get a citation. I only got one sent to my house and that was enough to teach the drivers in my home to slow down in school zones. But please, gentlemen and gentlewomen, please, please, please hear my heart. The data speaks for itself. Whether it's a million and a half, million point two that we've profited from this or a million point seven totally from the first seven days that the cameras have been on, it does not matter when you're talking about the life of the families, of the students who attend our schools. And two of the cameras that are on right now at Kenesha's College and on Main Street are both in Maston. Kenesha's College is in Maston, BPN, that camera points in Maston and the camera on Main Street points to Maston. So we have plenty cameras and folks, I'm just wishing and hoping that you're hearing the heart of a parent and as a teacher, former teacher in the school system, substitute teacher, that listen, these students need us to leave those cameras on all day. And folks need to understand the importance of complying with the speed limit. And if they can't do that, take public transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember, if I could say something?
Yes, Commissioner.
To Councilmember Wingo's point, and I want to be very transparent, I think the data is what we all want and I will constantly share it with you. We have to be open and transparent in this discussion and I want to share something that we put together to heat map with a lot of the data coming from 311 calls. And as the council member just mentioned, there are a lot of people worried about people speeding in our community and the dangers of speeding in our community. So let me just put this heat map up real quick and share it with you. As you can see there, this is high call density in that deep red. And you can see that we've used a lot of this for the school zones and where we are choosing locations to put our cameras and they align. These are people, just like you and I, regular people calling my office, calling 311, calling daily, saying we need people to slow down, we need people to observe the speed limit. And I think that this really speaks volumes. You know, if a picture is worth a thousand words, this is worth a thousand words.
Thank you. Councilmember Gollumbeck is up next. Councilmember, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, you can see that, you know, generally I support the legislation. As has been mentioned by some of my colleagues and Mr. Helfer, that people speed in the city of Buffalo and they especially speed by school zones. We have the statistics and the data that shows those. And in a perfect world, I would agree that you have two hours here and two hours there and the flashing lights only when the children are loading and unloading. But we forget that, you know, as Mr. Helfer said, you know, there are kids that walk across the street to go to other centers. This happens at Grabbyars Academy in my district where the kids walk on occasion. And I think that it is better to be safe than to be sorry. And I certainly hope that the whatever million dollars a week or whatever that it is that the city would take in quickly drives up because that's not risk, the safety lives of our childrens and our pedestrians. So I think that the goal of this legislation is to get people into the habit of slowing down. I can tell you that when, you know, traditionally I hit King Avenue and I'm heading northwards, I slow down because I know that there's a police officer with the radar going, you know, every hundred yards. And in the city of Buffalo, that's not been a high priority in the past. Also, I like the cameras better because they're going to simply, they're going to nail anybody that's speeding in that district. There's going to be very, very little room for human error. You know, a police officer pulls somebody over and they get a ticket. As Mr. Helfer said, there's a lot more money that is being spent on the sign and there's points that are going to be put on one's license. But once again, the key is teaching people to slow down. And yep, it is a pain to run right now when I drive by or when school was in session, when I drove by Grabbyars West Hurdle because I wasn't used to it, just like driving on the skid jackal when they lowered the speed limit. It was uncomfortable at first, but eventually you get used to it. And especially in front of the schools, it's for a very, very good reason, the safety of the children and the pedestrians. So, you know, I think that we educate people to slow down and I think we can take a look at this in the future and make more tweaks to it. But I think that if we have, you know, different times constantly at different schools, I think that that's going to open up a whole new kind of worms that people are going to be consuming even with the flashing lights. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several public meetings on the schedule for today. I, at this point, we are going to table this item and move on to the next item.
Item number one, food store license 1799 Genesee.
Items open.
This item is open. It's in Fillmore. Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes, may I please place the regular council medic conditions onto it, then with the Monday through Thursday to close at 11:00 PM and then Friday, Saturday and Wednesday close at midnight, please?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number two, constituent concerns regarding school zone veto.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number three, public comment regarding 975 to 1005 Furman.
Motion to table items three through six.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number seven, special use permit, 549 West Utica.
Items open.
This item is open. Is there anyone here to speak on 549 West Utica? Okay, Councilmember, this is in the Niagara District.
I'm sorry, would you revisit, that's on, I, send that without recommendation?
Okay, motion to send without recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Take from the table items eight, 13, 14, 15 and 49.
Seconded by Councilmember Gollumbeck.
Item number eight, veto message CCP 20-355, ordinance amendment, chapter 479.
Items open.
This item is open. This is what we were discussing before. This is the response, this is the veto message, the response to the legislation that would limit the school cameras to two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. I know there are some speakers here to speak on that. If you can keep your comments to three minutes so we can give everyone an opportunity to speak on this and the other items, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, you're correct, you have been joined by several speakers who wanted to comment on this item, first of which was Mr. Krestes of BPS.
Dr. Krestes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Fararelto and Honorable Common Council Members. Councilmembers Wingo and Gollumbeck, I want to thank you for your well-stated comments on the safety of our students. We really appreciate it. On behalf of Dr. Cash and the Board of Education, we're asking that you support and sustain the mayor's veto of the limits this body has placed on the school zone safety program enforcement hours. The district and our stakeholders have pleaded with you in the past to understand that when we open our schools, children will be dropped off and picked up all day. Parents and teachers will arrive at schools all day. Buses board all day throughout Buffalo because of field trips which occur every day at almost all of our schools. And like Da Vinci High School on Porter Avenue, for example, our students cross streets all day because of the multiple buildings of their campus or their use of the community. Your amendments to the law also don't consider the growth of our community schools and what's going on in those wonderful buildings. 26 community school sites in our district have increased their neighborhood enrollment by over 25% in the last few years. Because activities for families occur throughout much of each school day, you will have families attempting to make their way safely to buildings, not just in the early morning arrival or late afternoon dismissal times, but all day. The resolution that you passed also does not consider the half-day early childhood programs in private and Catholic schools, which again have drop-offs in the middle of a school day. And then finally, to Commissioner Helfer's point on the data, you know, the common council has resolutions on requests for data regarding these safety zones. And we just ask that you wait for the full knowledge of that data to be revealed to you over time. Right now, you're attempting to make legislative changes ahead of this valuable data before determining the impact on driver behavior. So our district is pleading with you at this time, please put Buffalo's children first and we do ask that you sustain the mayor's veto.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments and I know you were talking about community schools and there's a community school right down the street from me. I have just a question to Commissioner Helfer or Finn, how many of the cameras are placed next to community schools?
This is Coven. The cameras right now are at St. Joseph's University Parish, that's a parochial school, Notre Dame on Abbott Parochial, Nichols Private, Kenesha's Private and Buffalo Promise Neighborhood slash Westminster on Bailey. So I would say that's the only one.
Okay, out of the other 15 cameras that are scheduled to come online, do you have the info on how many of those are next to community schools?
I can get you that. How are you going to, what's your definition of a community school?
I'll let Dr. Krestes define that.
There are over 20 schools in the district that have special hours and special activities that, and they're called community schools.
Yeah, I know the one, I know the one down the street from me is a community school and I believe 50% of the students live within either six tenths or seven tenths of a mile, 30%, an additional 30% up to a mile and a half and the additional 20 outside of it. So if it's easier, maybe Dr. Krestes can send me a list of the community schools and I can send that over to Commissioner Helfer and we can get the info that way if that works for everyone.
That works for me, sir.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to do that. Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up note to your comments and that is that really as a result of the phenomenon of community schools, we've had a rise in local neighborhoods embracing the school in their actual community. So there's been a dramatic increase in the last few years of students walking to their neighborhood school.
I witnessed that firsthand and at North Park Academy, which is on Parkside in Tacoma, the Buffalo Public Schools is doing an absolute outstanding job with that school. I haven't, I think before it was a community school, there may have been one or two walkers. Now there's families from all over North Buffalo walking there, people, there's a waiting list, tons of people want to get into the school from the principal, the teachers, the parents, every, in the administration, everyone's doing a wonderful job there. So everyone in North Buffalo and in the area really appreciates that that's a community school and everything that BPS is doing there. So I just want to thank you again for that. Malcolm, we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, our next speakers are Jaclyn Matheny, Nathan Martin and Ricardo Herrera. Several others may have been added since then by council member invited to not have the complete list beyond Herrera.
Hi, this is Nate Martin. Thank you for a little bit of time. I'm Vice President at Duville College in Buffalo and our president, Dr. Clemo, could not attend today. But I did want to thank you for allowing us to comment. As Dr. Krestes indicated, you know, we would also like to ask that you support and sustain the veto of the change, the proposed changes. Da Vinci High School, one of the Buffalo Public Schools, is actually on our campus and so we can, we can speak to it directly. As Vice President of Operations, I see the impact every day of having the students of that school walk back and forth between buildings. As was mentioned at St. Joseph's, they leave one of, one of the buildings and go across the street to our gym or go across the street to our library or other assets in the community. So we think changing the speed limit to allow a change in the speed limit during the day would be, create an unnecessary risk to the students, certainly of Da Vinci High School that we see here every day. So thank you very much.
Hi, this is Jackie Matheny and I'm the Chief Enrollment and Marketing Officer at True Care College and we're located at 360 Choate Avenue in the city of Buffalo. And on behalf of True Care College and the president, our president, Basam Deeb, we join community groups and organizations across the city of Buffalo in supporting Mayor Brown's veto of the proposed ordinance that would limit the city's school zone safety program enforcement hours. We also join our Common Council Representative Chris Scanlon in his support of the mayor's veto. Our immediate neighbors include Mercy Hospital, Lorraine Academy and Mount Mercy High School, among many others. Traffic in and out of True Care College is hectic to say the least. We have significant parking limitations and many of our students park on the street and cars are constantly coming in and out of the neighborhood at all hours during the day. Mercy Hospital is a major employer and hundreds of cars come and leave the neighborhood all during the school day. The safety of our students is the number one priority of True Care College and that of our neighbors, many of whom are schoolchildren attending Lorraine Academy and the students at Mount Mercy High School. We believe that enforcing the school zone speed limit from 7:30 to 4:30 will not create any hindrances or disruptions to the neighborhood. And in fact, many would support these hours and would be strongly opposed to limiting them. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today on this issue.
Thank you. Malcolm, the next, any other speakers on this item?
Ricardo Herrera.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Ricardo Herrera, Buffalo Federation Neighborhood Centers, I'm the CEO. Because we operate and have sites on the east side, we are definitely in support of the mayor's veto on this issue. The physics, you can't debate the physics. Anytime above 20 miles an hour, you can seriously injure a young child. Adults could probably survive it. Based on the remote learning hybrid model, it's really difficult to put in just these overall time periods when it can be shut off and shut down. And it's only going to get more sophisticated as the school systems learn more about handling the hybrid learning models. The stuff that you would normally get in terms of visual cues, seeing large numbers of kids outside, you drive by, you will not see that many outside anymore, smaller numbers. So you don't, drivers just go and see the large school buses and the other things that would give them the visual cues. So my other concern has to do with the level of signage. I'm glad to hear about the flashing lights, but the areas that I've seen, just been driving through, they don't have them. They have the regular signage and the signage you almost write on it before you recognize it. So we have a problems in the size of the signage, how much lead-up time you have before you recognize. I think the flashing lights just have to, the beacons have to be universal. In terms of the impact that we are talking about COVID course, et cetera, we do have options of saying, okay, the first time, one thing, the second time, we will render the fines. So we have some discretion, I think, in terms of doing it. My concern as a person of color has to do when whether it will increase any reasons for traffic stoppages. So if it's just the cameras, then I know it's not going to lead to traffic stops, which then may lead to criminal act charges, et cetera. So I was, I was wondering whether there was any intention of using onsite police so that they're actually doing traffic stops, which would give them probable cause to search, which will have a disproportionate potential racial justice impact. So those are the things that I would be concerned about. So is it possible that we can do some demographic reporting out to see whether there are any disproportionate impacts, unintentional disproportionate impacts on people of color based on, based on the traffic citations? So far, we haven't seen that, and I would want to make sure that there are not disproportionate enforcement and create a wider tunnel towards criminal justice involvement. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have been joined by Justin Booth, who likes to comment.
Okay, Justin Booth, and then.
Yes, thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you. As you all know, I am the Executive Director at Go Bike. I also chair the Council's Bicycle Advisory Board and a parent of students in the Buffalo Public Schools, and here to support maintaining the school's safety zones and their enforcement at the current 15 mile per hour speed limit throughout the entire, the entire school day. As I've shared before, we know in the city of Buffalo that traffic safety is a continuous issue, and that school-age youth under the age of 18 are disproportionately impacted by traffic safety, representing more than a quarter of all traffic crashes happening in the city of Buffalo. In addition, 30% of the households in the city of Buffalo don't even have access to a vehicle. And so when we take a look at those numbers and how the pandemic has had an impact upon people in our city, we have seen over 3,000% increase in people cycling and a 500% increase in people walking, particularly during this pandemic because of some of the concerns around utilizing public transit. In addition, we've seen the amount of vehicles, miles driven down significantly, not only here in Buffalo, but across the United States. Crashes with vehicles upon vehicles is at a significant bow over the last 30 years, where pedestrian crashes are at a 30-year high. And so we need to make sure that we are having a positive impact upon some of our most vulnerable users. The concerns about charging people disproportionately impacted during this pandemic, additional fines and fees, I think is important to give the mayor additional credit for his reform agenda and the Buffalo Motorist Assistance Program, which will, you know, issue fines in accordance with people's ability to pay, to not have that disproportional impact on people's budgets, particularly during this time. So with that, I think, you know, as the council continues to debate this, the considerations should continue to be student safety, and not just how we look at enforcing the speed limits around our school and our school zones, but also how are we redesigning our streets to encourage the correct behaviors to make sure that the safe speeds are automatically provided in driver behavior, and prioritizing investments in the communities most at risk for automobile crashes and injuries, particularly in communities with lower median incomes and communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you. David Rust. Sorry, David, before you go, I said Council President Pridgen would go next, so Council.
I can wait on that. I can wait.
Thank you, Councilmember Farolado, and thank you, Council President Pridgen. Good afternoon, everyone. David Rust with Say Yes. Good to see you all. First, I note I appreciate the debate and the good conversation and the role of the Common Council, ranging from school safety through considerations of financial resources for people at a really tough time, and I respect the ultimate decision. Couple of comments I wanted to make is you take your ultimate decision into consideration, all centered around student safety, which Say Yes broadly supports. Dr. Krestes had mentioned the community schools, and Say Yes Buffalo does manage the community schools on behalf of the district, including all the activities which are taking place morning, noon, and night, and on Saturdays. In addition to the, the community schools, we're presently managing the virtual learning hubs, of which 52 are set up around the city of Buffalo, so that parents are able to drop off their children between 7:30 and 4:30, so they can participate in their synchronous and asynchronous learning, so their parent or guardian can go to work. We saw it as an economic and social bridge as parents are making hard decisions. And I would note that again, there we see parents dropping off and picking up children throughout the day. There's not a consistent stop at 7:30 a.m. and a repick up around 3:30. And as schools reopen, the same thing will happen. We're going to have all different times where students are entering the buildings, where parents are entering buildings. Councilmember Farolado noted the walkers, and we see that at each of the 21 community schools. So we do have safety concerns about that, and would support keeping speed traffic low during these hours, in particular, given the context of people in and out of buildings throughout the days noted, and again, on Saturdays, when we get back to the live Saturday academies at the community schools, which run generally between 9:00 and noon and 10:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays as well, too. So just a few points I wanted to put out there, and again, I thank you for the time and the good work that each of you do.
Thank you. Council President Pridgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to be clear, because it sounds as if part of this debate is an either-or. And there isn't the conversation of is there a way to better enhance student safety? I don't think that anybody on this council, and I'll speak for me, I'm not against the cameras. It is not, let's get rid of the cameras. Matter of fact, I was, I believe, at the press conference when one was rolled out. So I am in support, and I think the council members are in support. I did get a call from the union representative, said, why can't we sit down and look at it, talk about it, and figure out a way of adjusting it for student safety? So I want to be very clear here, because it's almost as if, if you want to adjust it, then you're not for student safety, and that's, that's not true. It's just not true. But at the end of the day, the same argument of student safety, because you have different hours of students coming into the school, especially the community schools, those cameras will not be on. The beacons will not be on at 7 o'clock when basketball games are getting out. And that's really, I think, where we're trying, where those of us who want to talk about better ways to do this, if you have a school that the cameras are on from 7:00 to 4:00, and then there's a basketball tournament at 7:00, to me, then you would also, the same children need to be kept safe, but there will be no camera, there will be no beacon. And that was the reason I talked about or asked, is there a way? And I think we have a letter, so from DPCC, from other people. So anyone who says, no one is complaining, if you even look at what was submitted to this council, there are, it's, some people on one side of the issue, some people on the other side of the issue. But I think to just simply say either or, we're going to do it, or we're not going to do it, and there won't be any discussion. I actually agree with the DPCC that each school district, I'm sorry, each school community should have some say. And I don't just mean the people in the building, I'm also talking about the communities that surround it, and how that affects that community. Because if you have a school, like in your district, councilmember, that they're walking, then that's a different type of community. But if you have a school in which children, students are going in, coming out, there are no activities late, then that's a different discussion. And I think that to just paint people who want to have the discussion as not caring about school safety of children is disingenuous, and it doesn't really help this conversation. And I just wanted to be clear that I support, and many councilmembers support, the speed cameras. But we also are, we, if no one else has received the calls, I've received the calls on both sides. I've received the calls from very organized effort of, you know, people says, we want them to stay. And then I've received the calls of constituents who also care about safety. Their concern is, and we have to, whether we want to deal with that word about money grab or whatever, because when, when it was a proposal for red light cameras, that's what we heard, right? So now it's different, and I'm okay with that. But at the end of the day, I think we need conversation to and to be, at least my ears are open to listening to every one side, but recognizing there are two sides, and one side may just not be as organized. Thank you.
Thank you. One, I believe we had one more speaker, then we'll go to the next item. Councilmember Wingo.
Let me pull over here. I, I'm sorry, but I don't agree. I, I have to say that it is one way or the other. Either you want folks to slow down around school zones, or you don't. The same people who call and say that they're speeding in my neighborhood, they're speeding down my street, there's a school around the corner, are not the same people who are calling and saying, we want to get rid of these speed on cameras. They're not the same people. The people who are calling and complaining are the ones who are inconvenienced with the safety of our children and our families. Those are the people who are calling. Those are the people who are saying, we don't want this. These are the people who are saying, this is a money grab. Let's call it what it is. People are inconvenienced with people's safety. That's what it is. If you want people to slow down in the communities, adhere to the laws, the camera should be on all day, period. Why? Because children are using the city of Buffalo for educational purposes all day. You cannot put a value on a child's life. I don't care if someone wants to go on a money grab or not. It is not a money grab. I'm a parent. My family, we got a citation. It didn't feel good to pay it, but it made me realize, oh, look, hey, guys, we have to slow down. Drivers in this house, we will comply, and the compliance rates have gone up. If people are speeding, they're speeding up to 61 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. How do you justify that? There is no justification of that, period. Nowhere, anywhere. You're doubling the speed limit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion sent without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. I, did Councilmember Wyatt?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, my camera went out, but I just wanted to make a comment. You know, Council President was right on point. We, we, the council was supportive of this measure, but we weren't supportive of the measure for the entire day that impacted many, many families. And some people may be able to afford $50, some may not. But at the bottom line, we want to make sure that children are safe. And we know that the arrival and departure times are the premium times in which children are exposed. So we focused on those times. I think the Council President made a recommendation that I absolutely would support. If we can give the school that convenience of being able to engage the beacons and that, I'm definitely in support of, because they know their schedule more than anything. But we do want to dispel the fact that there's a money grab. When I put forward the measure for red light cameras, many of my colleagues said, no, 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 we can't do that. But that's a major issue. It's a major issue in the university district, red light cameras. I've asked for striping, I've asked for line markers. I've asked for all, every measure there is for public safety. And we've not gotten to that point where we've gotten, been accommodated for all of those things. However, we are quick to put a measure in place on this main street on Bailey cameras when the children are dropped off on Bailey. They're dropped off on Westminster. But we have cameras on Bailey. So when people say it's a money grab, there's a reason why they feel like it's a money grab, because all the signs point to a money grab, not for children's safety. So when people talk about children's safety, and we talk about the other measures, we haven't put those measures in place. We don't have striping in every school district, or in front of every school. We don't even have sign markers saying that is a school there in some cases. So there's a lot of things that we could be doing and should be doing if we all are in support of the safety of our children and our parents at school buildings. But people have come out of the woodwork to jump on this bandwagon to charge a fee, but no one is around when we talk about the striping in front of a school. When we talk about a school being marked and saying, there's a school approaching, because not everybody is from this area. So I support us opening it up, the conversation, to make sure we're doing best for parents and children. But I definitely want to make certain that people are penalized unjustly when children are in the school building safely. And for the most part, you can't tell me all day long, there's this caravan of children going all day around throughout their schools, because that's not true. Now, in some cases it is, but it's not true all day. And for our people to be penalized, like a woman called me and was upset, because at 11 o'clock, she's getting a ticket for speeding. And she wasn't doing 30, she was doing what, the minimum over. You know, so again, we have to balance this out, because there are people hurting right now. And maybe some of you don't want to think about that, because you're thinking about the extreme measure. Well, I ask you, how many children have been harmed? And that was what someone brought to me, and I said, I don't know. But I don't want to wait to that point either. So that's why we are supportive of making certain that we're doing something for the children's safety and for parents. We also have these school cameras that's on bus arms. That's another thing that we've done that I definitely support this council support, because again, we are all in support of the safety of our children and parents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The next item?
If I could make a brief comment on that, I apologize, Councilmember. I know that you're, we've talked a lot about that, but one thing that I did just want to conclude with this, there's been a lot of good conversation. I appreciate everyone listening. I do think that we're all on the same page, that children's safety is the most important thing. One thing, one challenge that I think that would have to be worked through with any idea that we'd be able to provide the schools with the ability to change and basically automate the cameras and the beacons at the times that they wanted is the need for transparency for the drivers. Part of the reason why the signage is placed is so that there can be proof of what the times are, that the that the school's own speed limit is in place, and there's proof of when the cameras are therefore in place. If it was just beacons, there would be a lot of questions potentially. So that's, that's one comment. Secondly, you know, Councilmember Wyatt, you made the comment about, you know, ask for striping, ask for signage. We do have signage up at all the schools. If there is a school that we have missed or signs have fallen down, please let me know. We'll fix it as soon as possible. But one distinction I wanted to make with this treatment is these school's own speed cameras don't cost the city money. The speed, the striping does. So I think that that's part of the rationale why this is important, and why I think it's, it is a step in the right direction for children's safety. At the end of the day, we're treating the problem, that the problem is apparent to us, it's the speeding. You know, and that, that data was presented by Commissioner Helfer, and this isn't the only place that we're seeing the issue. So I just wanted to make that final concluding statement. Thank you for your time.
Onto the next item. We already closed this item, however, since three of my colleagues raised their hand, you can do a brief, like one-minute recap, because we have several people that are still waiting for the, to speak on their item, which was scheduled at 1:00. So I will go to the Majority Leader, Councilmember Wingo, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have some problems with the legislation as it is right now. I think that based on the conversations that I've heard so far, what we're proposing is not what we need. I mean, people are talking about buildings and after-school and all. Well, it doesn't cover the after-school, as Council President mentioned. We need to relook, rethink this. I mean, we can come out with something that is much better than what's being proposed. And I think we just need to sit together and deal with this. Now, as far as public safety, I don't believe there's a councilmember that is opposed to public safety, not only in school districts and school zones, but throughout our neighborhoods. I mean, where's the yelling and screaming when kids are getting killed on side streets in our neighborhood? And because there's no striping. I mean, where's the, you know, all the hoopla when it comes to the side streets, all the speedings and lack of speed bumps and lack of crosswalks that we need, not only in school zones, but in our neighborhoods. So we do care that. I care about our school zones, I care about our neighborhoods, and I think we need to do a better job. Not just here, what we. And I think we need to do a better job, not just here, what regards to school zone. I think it's important, but we need to look at this completely. I mean, the last time, the last incident I had was just a few, a month ago where a child was killed on Congress. I had a young child killed on the corner of Bustai in Jersey by a car. So we care about our children. And I don't want to make this, if, if we don't support this, we don't care about our children. What we're saying is if I don't support this is because I think there's something that could be better than this and that we could work towards. So I'm offering to work towards improving what's being recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wingo, it, it looks like you're working remotely now, but go ahead.
I didn't hear you. Listen, is this item being sent without recommendation?
This motion is being sent without recommendation for a vote for next week, Tuesday.
All right. Listen, I, I'm going to be very, very, very clear. These cameras are not just for the school zones. These cameras help trap, calm the traffic in surrounding areas as well. And if we are the same council who did present the idea of red light cameras, we're the same council who, who says that we care about the safety of our students. Then I don't understand why we don't leave the cameras on all day. This is a matter of right and wrong, and we are doing the best we can with what we've got. And what we have are cameras that should be on all day. And, and so, so what I'm saying is, I, I don't know a parent in the city of Buffalo who takes their child to school, who only drops them off between two times a day and picks them up between two times a day. I don't. Well, I don't right now, my wife does. But I think, but, but the, 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 the point that I'm trying to make is we're talking out of both sides of our neck right now. We can't be the same council that proposes cameras and then backpedals when folks who are getting tickets because they don't want to change their behavior are being fined. We can't do that. Change the behavior, you won't get tickets. Change your behavior, you'll potentially save some lives. End of story. And we all should uphold the veto.
Member Noakowski, and then we are on to the next item.
Thank you, I'll be brief, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a note that the Commissioner Finn did state that the cameras don't cost the city of Buffalo anything, but the striping and improvements to infrastructure would. But we did collect one point seven million dollars within thirty days. I do have a resolution in the Community Development Committee that would take some of this money that is generated from the cameras to invest in infrastructure around the, the schools. And I just want to put that out there and make that known. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I appreciate all the dialogue and communication. I appreciate the commissioners for coming and presenting the data. And Bethany, if you can call the next item, please.
Item number thirteen, special use permit, seven twenty-six Jefferson for assembly in N three E and N three C zones.
Motion, is this public hearing, motion of, of the public hearing?
Seconded by Council President. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Michael Bray. I'm an architect with Foyt Albert Associates. I'm here on behalf of our client, the Emmanuel Temple Seventh Day Adventist Church. And we are looking at the property at seven twenty-six Jefferson Avenue, along with surrounding properties that will also be encompassed with that address. It is at the corner of Jefferson and Genesee Streets. We are looking to build a civic building, which is twenty-two thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. It will encompass a three hundred seat worship center, a fellowship hall, religious educational rooms and multipurpose hall. This is on vacant land at the moment. This church will fill that vacant land with, uh, not only the, the building itself, but also surrounding site improvements and the adjacent sidewalk improvements as well. And this, this will fill, um, basically that vacant land contributing to the integrity of that neighborhood. And we're asking for your special use permit to allow an assembly occupancy on the property.
Uncle President Pridgen. Uncle President, you're on mute.
Sorry, my, my spacebar wouldn't let me out. There might be other people to speak, but I could probably move this along unless there's somebody here to speak in a negative that I fully support this. And if there's nobody else to speak in any other way, I fully support this.
There are no other speakers, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Pridgen, Council President Pridgen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we also add item sixteen from the table?
We can, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number fourteen, special use permit, three fifty-one Tacoma for tavern, outdoor dining and live entertainment in N three E zone.
Public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski, this item was up two weeks ago. And they, um, they received approval from the planning board, but they are, had to come back for a different special use permit that has to do with the same purpose that they already discussed two weeks ago. So if you can give a brief recap, that would be appreciated to the applicant.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jacob Pirkowsky, I'm an attorney with the Tarantino Law Firm. I represent a very interesting group called Chartered Professors LLC. And they are the owners of three fifty-one Tacoma and the associated addresses. There's a parking lot and an adjacent building. This was a former church on Tacoma Avenue in North Buffalo. And the Chartered Professors Group provides educational classes primarily for students from Italy who come to Buffalo every year. And what they're looking to do here, the reason for our special use permits is we've been changed as Councilman Farallato said, we've been changed from an N three R to an N three E. And so we're looking for special use permits for outdoor dining, for assembly and for live music. Just very briefly, outdoor dining is simply because we'd like to have some restaurant, excuse me, um, not assembly, forgive me, that, that's already been issued, for a tavern. We have a special liquor license issued from the state. And so we'd like to have some sort of ability to host dinners associated with the events that go on at the church and have a restaurant with very limited hours that's open to the public. There's great patio space there, the sidewalk's very large. And the block that we're on itself is unique in that although we're in a largely residential neighborhood, the block that we're located on is primarily really a commercial block. It's the church and then a number of storefronts with apartments above it. There's no homes that open up into, on that part of Tacoma. So we're looking for these three special use permits. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't want to recite issues that we've talked about many times here.
Jacob, I just wanted to touch base. I was under the impression that the space was going to be more used for banquet hall and special events. If people were so inclined to do that, is that still the plan?
That's still the plan. The educational component is, is only a short portion of the summer. Though that, that has been the steady core of the business over the years. The, the rest of the year, the space will be used as a banquet hall. And really what we'd like to do is offer a live music venue, particularly for classical music and opera. And so, you know, we can host weddings, we can host funerals, we can do those kinds of things, brunches. But really concerts would be what, what the draw would be. So it'd be an additional concert space in the city that would cater to, the, the room has amazing acoustics. So it lends itself to that type of music.
May I say something?
Sure, Marian.
So what he's saying is correct, except for this one other piece, like we really are a conference center. So we're planning on having lectures and conferences with medical professionals and continuing education. So we're really looking at this more for ancillary usage. The only reason that we needed the tavern piece had to do with the liquor license. And the only reason that we had to have any opening for public usage had to do with the type of liquor license. That's really not going to be our primary thing, but it is something we really would love to be able to offer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? If there are none, we will close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Motion is to approve, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item fifteen, zoning map amendment, two ninety-eight Hampshire from N two R to N two E zone.
Motion open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck. This item is open and I believe it's in the Niagara District. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and listen to the majority here.
Chairman, we're going to send this without recommendation. I'd like to speak to the applicant.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Motion to send without rec, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item sixteen, special use permit, twenty-five oh five Main for tavern and outdoor dining in N three C zone.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon. This item is located in the Maston District. I know there are a couple of speakers that are scheduled to speak.
Hello.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
My name's Leo Schultz. I'm a representative of Titan Holdings, who's the owner of the property. We are planning to renovate and make, do a reactive reuse project for the twenty-five oh five building, which is the former Kenton Manufacturing Building. And right across the street from TriMaine on the corner of Rodney and Main Street. It's a twenty thousand square foot space approximately. There will be five residential units, a cafe space and some Class A office space located inside the, inside the property. Over the years, the, uh, the grade of Main Street has been changed. This building, the structure was built in the nineteen twenties by Ford Motor Company. When they were doing, when they created the Ford Motor Plant, which was a try, which is now the TriMaine Building. And engineers have essentially changed the grade. And now there's about a thirty foot drop from the building down to the sidewalk. So we are anticipating and planning to have to add some ramps around the, around the property for ADA compliance. So we don't have to disrupt the actual existing structure and make it safe for people to get on and off the property.
I had a quick question, was the, this was, this was at the planning board last week, is that correct or earlier this week?
Correct, yes.
And then were, were there any specific conditions put on it by the planning board? And this is in Councilmember Wingo's district. I don't know if he's with us or not, but I know some people called my office and expressed some concerns. So I just wanted to get on the same page. So what were the conditions that the planning board put on this?
There is no conditions. They express positive feedback that, that, that it was great for the area. And that they were hoping that they would see the project move forward. But just by the actual people that are on the planning board, there was no other people present. I was the only speaker.
Okay, and was there, is this going to be, what type of events will be held here?
I think of like a spot coffee or a cafe space. And maybe like a, like a restaurant type space next to it that maybe would be comparable to Hutch's. Like a higher end, white tablecloth restaurant with a little bit of outdoor dining. Tavern space.
All right, so I know there were two other speakers, this is in Councilmember Wingo's district. So what we're doing after the speakers, we're going to have a motion to send it without recommendation. And then I would urge you to contact the Councilmember Wingo's office after this meeting, if you want to discuss further. Chief Malcolm, can you please announce who the two speakers are?
Beyond the speaker who just went, we don't have an additional list.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Yes, I, I had registered to speak. My name is Kathleen Boone. I live on Greenfield Street, which is in the neighborhood and received notice of this public hearing. And when I looked at the special use permit, something that caught my eye was, it's on page six, where there's indication of, quote, "a maximum of four hundred people for on-premise dining." So this, this made me and, and some of my neighbors wonder what the scale of this activity is going to be, questions about parking and so on. And actually, on further investigation, I know Mr. Schultz just mentioned Class A office space as part of this. That there actually, apparently, the project is also including a design and engineering firm called Mean Guppy that is going to be in residence there, which I certainly have no, no question about. But my, my question is really what is the overall nature of this multi-use enterprise going to be? And specifically because of this mention of a four hundred person overall occupancy, questions of, as I say, parking noise and so forth. Thank you.
Do I have the floor?
Any other speakers?
I, I know that my neighbor, excuse me, my, my neighbor, Robert, I see him on the screen. He's still muted, I know he wanted to speak. And I think actually, Councilmember Farallato had just stepped away and now he's back.
How do I do it?
You're, you're unmuted now, you're on.
All right, I, I have a few questions. I, I see that you want to.
Robert, if you can just direct the questions to me and then I will ask the applicant.
Okay. I, I see that he wants to extend a stairway onto the public right of way. Is that truly necessary when I see the amount of room they have? It just, it doesn't seem quite right to do that. And then the, the other question was, if they're going to have music or something, I, I don't know if that's appropriate that, because we can hear everything from Main Street, it just echoes through the neighborhood. Can you address those issues for us?
All right, so the two, there were two questions about if you plan on having, plan on having music. And the second is adding an entrance or exit into the public right of way.
A stairway on the right of way.
I, yes. So first of all, I, we're not in the, in the business of live music. And we don't have current anticipation to do that. The place next door is a music venue, so we would direct you to them. They've been there for over a hundred years. So we, we, only music you'll hear is the next door bar and grill. The, as far as the plans to extend to Main Street, there's already, from the anticipated plan, there's an additional sixteen feet of foot of, of right of way on the other end, if we were to take eight of those feet. So you're looking at, you know, twenty-four plus feet of right of way right now, three layers of sidewalk. We have a, we have certain design considerations when it comes to historic considerations and such that we want to make sure that we preserve the structure as is. We were actually asked to do this. So we're just trying to make sure that it's accessible for people who, you know, don't have the ability to access buildings via just straight up walking, using their feet. We want to make sure that, that we have the appropriate ramps and that the ramps are of an appropriate grade. We didn't own the building when Main Street was regraded to thirty feet, thirty inches below the building. And obviously that would be a concern when you're being able to use something like this building. So for us, you know, we, it's not, it's not ideal. But we're trying to be creative with our design solutions and trying to create an interesting space that would, that would allow for all sorts of people to be included in, in the events.
Am I still there?
You're still here, Robert, if you can just ask one more, if you can just.
One, one more question. But why does it have to come out onto the right of way? Why does, why don't you just turn those stairs ninety degrees and walk up into your space? If, I mean, it's just a. If, I mean, it's just a parking lot now. I mean, all the stuff you're putting in is new.
Yeah, I just want to add, if there's someone, if there's a proposal to put something into the public right-of-way that has to get reviewed by the Department of Public Works and they make two determinations, if it's a minor uh, encroachment on the public right-of-way, they could admit, they could approve it on their own. If it's a major encroachment, I know that has to go to the council. Um, but I'll let that, the applicant, if you can just answer that and then we'll go to the next item.
Yeah, so we will, we, we have anticipation to put this, um, in, in the appropriate approvals with the Department of Public Works. Um, there's many considerations. Uh, our property line does not go, um, anywhere near. We don't have any property line outside of the building on the Main Street or Rodney side of the building. So that's all I'll say. I don't, I understand the question very well.
I, I apologize. Um, it, could I also have clarification on that question of the four-hundred-person occupancy? Is that, is that accurate?
I-
Question for the applicant, is that of the four-hundred-people occupancy?
Yeah, I, I can't comment on the occupancy at this time because, um, we have to go for a certificate of occupancy with the city when we go through the permitting process. Um, as a business, will you try to ask for a high number of occupancy given, um, the profitability of a, of a, of a space? So for instance, if my occupancy is too low, um, the businesses will not be able to survive and you will just have a big empty structure sitting at the corner of Main Street.
So I just have one last question and then we're going to go to the next item. So I think some people, and I received an email, are under the impression that this is going to be an enormous bar or restaurant that seats four hundred people. And it, it sounds like to me that there's a, that you will be building out a space. There may be more than one businesses in here and you're not necessarily, you don't have a restaurant lined up or you're not out, opening a four-hundred-seat restaurant. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. There is no, uh, occupants at this time. Um, the, the, we are not building out a massive restaurant venue in the space. It is not a twenty thousand square foot restaurant. It is a three thousand square foot restaurant. And it is a, well, three thousand square foot combined dining space split up between two separate uh, pieces that will be-
The space was purchased, the space is essentially, the, the space was purchased and it's being designed to fit a certain type of different uses in it. And those are not, they're, they're, once that happens, around, just so everyone knows, if that, once that happens, then the restaurant would have to come back and there would have to, there would be different, a whole different set of approvals. It seems like they're just trying to get it, the building in one condition, to get the approval to do a build-out without specific tenants lined up. Is that, am I accurately reflecting what you were saying, Leo?
Yes, you're, you're accurately reflecting the majority use of the spaces for Class A office for an engineering firm as, uh, was brought up in this discussion. Uh, the engineering firm is a bunch of very respectable, pr, white-collar professionals who will park, um, in the Tri-Maine parking lots that have almost no cars in them. Um, and that will be non, non, a non-consideration as far as traffic, traffic is concerned because there is thousand parking spaces available at this time. Um, so that's what I, what else, what I'll say.
You know, I appreciate it and I understand with, um, I know in a lot of other instances, I'm, I'm sure Councilmember Wingo would have probably had a community meeting to let the neighbors know what was happening or what was specifically proposed, but the people who live within four hundred feet received a notice. And after receiving that notice, it wasn't, it's not really clear what exactly is happening. It says there's going to be a public hearing about a specific license without, um, the other, without the entire application. And that's just how the notification process works. So I completely understand the, the concerns that people have after seeing that. And so, um, we're going to send this without recommendation. And if people have follow-up questions, I would encourage you, um, to contact, you can contact Councilmember Wingo's office. And I know some of you live in my district, you can certainly contact me and if I can help facilitate some communication, we'll go from there. So, thank you.
Right, motion, motion to close public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Sound without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number forty-nine, suggested changes to small cell agreement.
Items open.
This item is open. We had rep, we, this is an item we discussed on the council, uh, probably over one year ago when we were talking about one company, um, coming in and the fees associated with it. And since then, we have, um, heard from a representative of Verizon who wanted to address the council and speak to that in a bit more detail. And that is what we're doing now. So you can begin now.
Hi, uh, my name is Chip Lawrence from Verizon. Uh, thank you, Councilmen and the rest of the, uh, council and committee members. Um, just like to take an opportunity to, uh, see if there's any appetite for the council and the mayor's administration um, to, uh, you know, revise chapter four forty, um, and the rules governing the small wireless facilities. Um, now that the, uh, Court of Appeals Ninth Circuit has made a decision, um, in September, I believe, um, backing that FCC order, uh, we'd like to reengage, uh, with the, uh, leaders of City Buffalo to look at that language and see if we can work with you, um, to get that FCC compliant. We have a very strong desire to deploy in the city. Um, right now, that agreement is, uh, basically a, uh, effective prohibition of us doing so as it doesn't comply, uh, with the FCC order.
I appreciate that. And so just so we're on the same page, so Verizon has an interest in coming in to do business in the city of Buffalo for what specific technology?
Uh, small wireless facilities, the wireless network.
And that would be on the small cell agreements to do, um, that has to do with the small cells so that could be five G, is that it or?
Eventually, yeah, for initially, we, we would need to run, um, fiber optics, um, on existing poles and potentially new poles depending on where the network needs are. That would set the, and, uh, mount, um, small wireless antennas about the size of a lamp uh, on top of, uh, telephone poles and other utility poles. Um, that would enhance the network and set the, uh, foundation for five G deployment.
Okay, and so does this have anything to do with, um, cable or internet? Or is this specifically for existing cellphone users?
It does have to do with, um, broadband, um, wireless broadband, which again, we're seeing the consumer demand far outpace the consumer demand for wired broadband, uh, and, and video. Once you've got the broadband there, you know, not to digress, but the video side of it is, you know, we're seeing cord-cutting and, you know, the Netflix's and a, all the different streaming apps that are out there replace the traditional video, um, which can be done wireless now too. So we see, you know, the, the, it's, it's here now, but the next wave getting into a wireless broadband which allows you to work, live, you know, go to school, teach, uh, public safety, all through the wireless platform or voice, data and video.
All right, and so your concern was, I know, I believe, I believe right now the city, and I don't think, um, anyone is here from Public Works or telecommunications, and I know we had talked about this a while ago, is the fee arrangement that the city has with, uh, is that what it, what the main concern was?
That is one of them, yeah. We've got some details, if we could, you know, have a dialogue. Um, I think we have a, a letter out to, um, the mayor and also, um, a letter out to Council President highlighting some of the concerns we have. Fee is absolutely one of, um, the major concerns, more of the major roadblocks. The FCC has set a rate of two hundred and seventy dollars. What we're really looking to do is, is get, uh, cities like Buffalo to get compliant with cost-based, uh, not market-based. The FCC has said, you know, and we've done some studies where two seventies, frankly, is quite generous. Um, you know, when you look, once we've built, you know, hundreds of nodes, uh, and it's reoccurring. It's not, you know, a one-shot fee once a year. And I always use examples of, you come to, you know, City Hall, I'm going to build a deck on the back of my property, I pay my permit fee. I don't get annual permit fees for that deck. Um, this, th, these MLA agreements, it's a two hundred and seventy-dollar recurring fee. So once you get hundreds of nodes up there, that is recurring. And I understand, you know, from, from administration, it was mentioned, you know, a couple of years ago about it being a budget, uh, item. You know, we're really trying to deploy a service that, you know, the community would benefit from, um, and do so within, you know, the confines of, of the FCC order.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming here. I would like to, I would like to table this item. If any of my colleagues have any other questions, you can go ahead, but I would like to see this tabled for, um, either two weeks or four weeks, and if staff can work, um, with Verizon on this. And I would like to have, if you can come back, and I'd like to have someone from the Department of Public Works and telecommunications, so we can all have this conversation at the same time. Um, and I appreciate your time coming here to speak.
Thank you.
Motion to table.
Motion to tables, seconded by Council President Pridgen, who has the floor.
I, I wasn't going to pass, but Chip, uh, have, have you been with Verizon for a long time?
Twenty-five years.
So you, you, you were familiar with, we're begging you all to bring files in?
One hundred percent.
And, and Verizon basically told us, get lost? You, you remember that?
I wasn't in government affairs, I'm familiar with it. I was in Albany Construction building files into different pockets on this side of the state. But I am familiar with Verizon's.
Tell your bosses we'll consider this, but, um, they, they, uh, they gave us the high old goodbye and when, when we needed a product in the city that would have enhanced. So on that, is the files, um, is what you're proposing, is that different? Does it do something different, Chip, than the files?
Um, it, it's, it's, again, it's, it's voice, data and video capabilities. So it, in my eyes, it replaces files, right? It, it provides those same services, but as time goes on and consumer behavior changes, what we see is people wanting to have that, those three functionalities, where they want, when they want. So on a mobile platform, those same three types of services can be taken anywhere. You know, if suddenly things change, we've got a pandemic and you're forced to, you know, no longer, you know, work, uh, uh, on Main Street and you've now got to do your work from home, you have that capability now without losing those services.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Next item?
That was the last item.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Council President.
I, I've got some messages here from the council staff that someone is on, or did that change?
No, sir, uh, Glenn Howard has, uh, requested an opportunity to speak on a tabled item. The items are controlled by you, however, so I wanted to make sure that you wanted to, uh, check on that first.
Yeah, I know that these items, we already had the public hearing on the, one of them we did already, I believe, or?
Yes.
I wasn't aware she was on for these, except just reading right now in the chat.
No, I, um, thank you, Council President, and, uh, thank you. We can let that go and you can get on with the rest of your day. We just want to make sure that we're here for any item on the preservation board agenda that gets transferred to your committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Motion to adjourn.